Full complaint probably to Attorney General's office for Maltese George. I understand your frustration, your frustration with the justice system, not with this.
You guys are top there, period.
Great, I agree with you. But that's the answer though, we can't, we can't, we can't remove those individuals because we don't like what they're doing. Okay, that's what this is. We can't remove them because we don't like what they're doing or how they're doing it. They have their own attorney, they're their own body, they're accountable to Attorney General's office.
Okay, I've been on this board now for seven years and every year we do this. And almost every time, we only have one applicant for, for the outside part. We haven't had to choose between one or the other all, I think maybe once. Other than that, we've had one person apply, so who else do you appoint? And they have associations with motels, hotel, our commissioner, the city appoints their city man. But when we appoint these people, there usually is no competition, I mean, seriously, we have one person and that's all we have, so there's nobody else competing for that job. They sit on that board, Mr. Weevil has answered your question, George. If you got it, could go through the Attorney General's, it doesn't come through the county. We have, we make the appointments, but to remove somebody, uh, unless they're really grossly negligent in our eyes.
No, we can't even, that's not even the standard.
Okay, that's it.
We can't remove them, pretty much.
All right, does anybody else have any comment on this one right here for the River Foundation? Again, it's the city, not the county, so I'm just trying to answer these questions from Mr. Chatchis the best I can. And we're gonna be over and done with it.
Yeah, more, yeah, more to the point of the torn record of the independent public body.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that? Okay, we're gonna move forward to item number five. Item number five is a discussion only. It's about the building inspector and the allegations about a trip taken in a county-owned vehicle, George Chatchis. So the answer to that was the building inspector's trip to Eureka was investigated and was no proof that any other person was in the vehicle with him. Pictures were taken of the building inspector and family members in a restaurant. It was investigated, but it was not totally proven that they were in the vehicle. There's been a policy stayed in place about, since this item was brought up, about anyone riding in a, in a county vehicle. And then that policy has been brought up since you brought yours, George, and thank you for that. But there was no actual proof that someone else was in the vehicle, they were in the restaurant. How they got there, it was investigated and it was never proven that there was two people, that there would, he took somebody else in his own, in county vehicle, I'm sorry.
You think that truck just rolled over there by itself and parked in front of the.
I didn't say that, George, I said someone other than a building inspector.
Testified at a city council meeting and they gave me this picture, so don't tell me this won't prove.
But George, the building inspector has a right to travel, he does building permits out in GRP and White Pine Eureka Board.
Not with his wife, he was out of his work area.
He was, we could, it was investigated and was not proven that she or anyone else was in the vehicle. He drove it there, it's a county city vehicle, end of story.
Show me the investigation.
I'm sorry. That's, that's the answer to that, does anybody else have that?
Uh, if our building inspector is out over next to the county line, he's not allowed to drive into Eureka to have a meal, to take his break. He's gotta drive all the way back to Ely before he's allowed to eat.
So you're telling me he has to come back.
He's asking a question, he's asking a question whether.
I'm asking that question for Georgia.
Okay, yeah, he's, he's over at the county, against the county line, he's just a few miles outside of Eureka. It's, it's time for him to have a meal and he has to drive all the way back to Ely before he can eat?
When it comes to the position of the building inspector, because it's a shared services agreement, there's any dispute or issue with anything that that position might be doing, I'm not talking about the individual, because he's not noticed to be here today. There's a, there is a, um, there's a procedure in our agreement that we sit down with our, then it's the city representatives and review the alleged misconduct. This never rose to that, I called the mayor personally, I told him what the issue was. The vehicle's amongst the county, he is a city employee, so he falls under their personnel, let me finish, falls under their personnel policy. What you brought to light, George, was that we had a absence from our vehicle policy that prohibited other people in the, in the, um, listen. So after you brought it, after you brought it to, to our attention, we adjusted our person, our, um, vehicle policy to prohibit passengers other than the employees.
I don't know that.
We had a public meeting on, we pa, we passed it in this meeting.
I asked Tim specifically. I'm waiting for that as well as the, uh, letter of resignation.
Okay.
That's one.
Geez, that's right, I'm not holding my breath.
Okay, so we, uh, we adjusted that based on your allegations. I asked the mayor to look into the personnel call about what, do an investigation at the city side of what, what their employee was doing over there. The only thing I got back from the city was exactly what Mr. Bybee's talking about, that he wasn't Eureka for a meal. Now, I'm not addressing what he did or whether he spent money on the other person in the vehicle or who bought lunch or, I'm not even looking at that stuff, that's the city side. If we have more of an issue now with the position other than what we already addressed with addressing the vehicle policy, we'll have to do a close personnel session with this individual specific to that issue, but the commission already addressed it. And the commission made a, pretty much made a determination that there wouldn't be any accountability for having anyone else in that vehicle because there was no policy on it at the time. But now we would, if it comes up again. So you made positive change, George, thank you.
And the other part of that, George?
Your other employees, when they're far away from city of Ely, they take a sack lunch with them. Anyone who goes out in the field knows better than that. Now, are you gonna allow other employees who happen to be on the field, maybe they're close to Wendover, maybe they're close to, uh, Baker, to go in the, uh, the community and, uh, buy their lunch?
Well, this isn't a question of the lunch, it's a question of the vehicle and, uh, the policy they're.
A government vehicle.
Excuse me.
So we have to dictate what they're allowed to eat now?
That's exactly right, we, we are.
I'm not saying they can't eat, you gotta have the same, uh, policy for everybody, all employees.
Mr. Bybee brought up a good point, sixty-six miles back as opposed to twelve miles, let's use common sense here, George. And the other part that I was, that I haven't gotten to yet, but I am going to, is that we evaluate, we do, uh, evaluations on each and every department head. The, the building inspector will be part of that process because he will be evaluated like everybody else, like once a year, like we just got done doing all of them. So we will have him in, we'll evaluate it, we'll take our opinion of how his job performance is. The city will do theirs between the two entities, they'll get together. And you brought, Mr. Weevil have brought up, you're opening a lot of eyes, George, you've done a good job, nobody's, nobody's questioning that. So we're answering your questions as best as we can, so we don't have to address these anymore and we're not going to. So that's what we're doing here, does anybody else have anything?
I want accountability.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Chatchis on this item? Okay, that item is done.
Pretty weak.
I'm sorry, that was a discussion only, this item is number six, this is also a discussion item, a discussion about the Centennial Building and its temporary roof.
Five, you missed one.
What did I miss?
I was building inspector.
We did the building inspector, five. We've done everyone.
Well, you didn't address what your policy says, section two point two, two point three, two point four, two point four point five, two point one two, two point two five. You're gonna be approving that today.
What's that?
What's that, George?
Your personnel's, uh, policy.
About what, though, how's it relate to the building inspector's allegation about taking a county-owned vehicle?
Well, he's part of your, uh, entity.
George, I just told you, we're gonna be evaluating.
Okay, alright, okay.
We're answering your questions, that's the idea of this, George, I'm trying to make you happy.
You're not doing a good job.
I'm sorry, but you're getting your answers wrong, I knew you wouldn't like them, I told you that, but you might not like them.
I told you, this is business.
This is it.
And business is not good.
And business isn't gonna be repetitious anymore.
It's gonna change.
Thank you, George. Discussion only about the Centennial Building and its temporary roof. The Centennial Building is a privately owned building.
Uh-huh.
Wait a minute.
Keep going.
The tarp on the, on the ceiling is to protect the inside of the building. The roof is in temp, is temporarily closed until they can raise the funds to put a new roof on. So, they put something up, just like you put a tarp on your cement or your wood until you're ready to use it after the winter. They have that up there, it's not occupied, the, 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 the roof there is to protect the inside. We don't allow that to protect that building, it's gonna deteriorate way beyond repair. So they, they're in the process, they're doing what they can to get the funds raised to put a new roof on the building. So George, that's the way that one is, I'm sorry, but they're, they have the right to protect the property.
And I'll afford that, I understand there's, uh, there's financial situation, I'm going through the same thing, okay? That's a, that is not a public building, it's a private club, it's a commercial building, the rules are different.
It's vacant, George, and they're just trying to protect the property.
It's being used, I'm not lying.
Hey, it's vacant, they aren't holding meetings, it doesn't have a roof, George.
Be careful of what you're saying there.
Well, you be careful what you, George.
I'm telling you, it's being used, I see people in and out there all the time.
So, I will tell you this, um, no, I don't think it's been operated because the, uh, because of the situation we're in. But, uh, the, the tumblebugs, uh, Jim does have, does occupy that space, but it's in the basement.
What'd you say?
They're in the basement.
Who is?
Uh, the tumblebugs.
Present.
Yes, as long as I know.
Get in basement, George. Get tarped.
Doesn't matter, there's no ADA.
I'm sorry. I am trying.
Possibly, but the point is, this building resides within the city, this is outside our jurisdiction completely.
Thank you very much.
Pass the buck.
We're not passing the buck, George, we're.
You're supposed to invoke enforced laws and areas where we have no jurisdiction.
You can have his salary.
It's not a building inspection, George, you're talking about the roof and the visqueen that's covering the roof.
You told me it was vacant, you just had a commissioner.
I didn't know there was somebody in the basement, George, I'm just answering your question, your complaint is about the temporary roof. I answered why the temporary roof is there, it's to protect the inside and.
Was it permanent code?
I don't know any of that, George, I'm just, you asked a question about the, the roof.
I asked the question, I'm the answer.
And I'm giving the answer, I'm giving it to you, it's the, the tarp is there, George, is to protect the inside. I didn't ask that. Well, George, that's the answer, I'm giving it to you.
Is that, is that tarp violating code anyway?
Can I make a statement?
Who is this?
This is Brad.
Is it Brad Christensen?
Yes, you can. Go ahead, Brad.
Um, George has a piece of property himself on the corner of Crawford and Ogden that has the tarp on it. So I don't know what's big concern. There's no permits required to cover up, but use the tarp to cover up.
That was my question, Brad, thank you, if, if that's in any kind of violation, um, to, uh, to pres, put a temporary preservation while you're waiting to get the permanent replacement.
It is not, it is not.
It's a weather strip and it's.
It's a permanent place when you do the replacement.
Do you hear that, Mr. Commissioner?
What'd you say?
What I put on there is a protective weather strip, it's all that baff lumber.
Well, I, you, I'm giving you an answer on the Centennial Building as far as.
I don't know if it's a commercial building.
I'm sorry.
So, I, I'm on a focus tense with Mr. Bybee brought up, that we can, uh, through the agreement with the city for Mr. Christensen's services, as to those properties within the county that we do control. Uh, for services he renders to the county. Any complaint about whatever issue George has with properties within the city, I'm sure he can find something the county can complain about, okay?
Okay.
But with this building in the city, that should be lodged in the city council. Because they're the ones that can act and say, well, what do we need to do to address, how can we help, uh, whoever owns that building so they can get the same address and get this eyesore out of our community downtown? Or whatever the issue is. Or to look at how many other people and provide information, like I didn't know that it's okay to put a tarp. Or it doesn't matter what the material is, to protect your property while you're trying to get, you know, a roof fix. Because roofs give in maybe when you don't have the money to fix it.
You're right.
What I'm hearing from George is he wants to evict the tumblebugs, so, okay.
No, no, you, you heard wrong.
So that's what I'm hearing, and that's what I complain to the city, so they can discuss it and come up with a solution. We can only address those kind of concerns in the county.
So that one adds to that with the Centennial Building, thank you Shane for bringing up the fact that it's in the city, that it's again, you bring stuff to the county that is in the city, when you got stuff for the county.
They're getting money from a county entity, meaning the Tour Rec Board, okay, it's a private club.
Again, George, we've, we've addressed that, you wanted to know about.
If you're gonna throw money out like that, I want my money.
Why don't you make complaints against Eureka County, because this board has almost as much control over Eureka County as the county of the Tour Rec Board and the city of Ely.
I asked. I asked. I asked, do you have a working agreement, I'm still waiting, by the way, as well as the, uh, other two items.
A working agreement for what?
With Eureka County, that he should be over there doing any kind of inspection.
No, we don't.
Well, it's been running since I have it, I won't be asking again.
Thank you so much, anybody else on the commission got anything to say about the Centennial Building? None?
None.
Okay, we're going to, uh, the next item, item number seven, discussion only about the critical housing shortage and the county's action to move the development of affordable housing forward. Number one, these houses are not under the Affordable Housing Act, we went to single-family homes. Number two.
Wait a minute.
Wait.
What's affordable, three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand?
George, Mr. Chatchis running the meeting, for God's sake.
I'm running a meeting here. Points of, uh, interest on this particular item, mister.
Well.
We're going to.
You're interrupting the chairman.
Yes, and, and so let me, let me finish here, George, you, you put affordable housing on it, not me. The houses that we did, we did public meetings on it, we had public meetings on the disposal of the property. We, we met, we advertised, we went out, we submitted, we had it posted on the, on the county website for bids, we got one. We passed it unanimous in the building, in the, uh, in the commission meeting. And, uh, we, the, uh, several developers, pardon me.
Did you advertise in the newspaper?
I don't, uh, we did before, but we couldn't afford to continue to advertise in the newspaper because of the cost. So we advertised, we saw.
We're under the same obligation.
George, we, we advertised, we went out and asked every developer we could find, none were interested, we had it, we had one more, one more month to do, we had it out there, we had a developer put in a bid, we opened it at the public meeting, it was open. The houses were, the, the issue was critical housing shortage, which everybody knows absolutely there is, and the other one was for economic development. We had the district attorney's office work with us, we went through all the legal processes, the houses are gonna move forward. They're going to be hopefully around two fifty, not three hundred, and they're not a, affordable housing like you suggested. So those are the answers.
You don't want this suggested, not me.
Hey, I didn't put this on here.
You did.
Okay, but you, you put the three hundred thousand dollars on there.
That's what you said at the city council meeting, three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty.
Two hundred fifty.
Two fifty, two thirty and two fifty.
Remember, I was using the term affordable.
No, no, we tried.
Look, the, the reality of it is, when those homes are made available because of like housing shortage, people move out of the more affordable homes in our community and move into those homes, freeing up inventory for other people that need homes in this community.
True.
It doesn't matter how you shake it, we need homes in this community, it was legal. And I think anytime George brings up these kind of comments, they're repetitive, they're personal attacks, and he can be silenced or trespassed from this meeting.
Okay, and that's, that's the answer I've got for you on that one, George, that we're moving forward, we're gonna.
For the record, I don't like the answer.
Okay, I'm sure you don't like a lot of them, but thank you very much. Last item, and this is the last item we have, because you've brought it up time after time, discussion about the sound system at the library conference room for commission meetings. We've got speakers, we're doing the best we can, we know it can get better, but we are addressing the sound system in the library for county commission meetings. And you can see today that the other members, so they can be here to have microphones, we are looking at different, uh, sound systems, and Ian can address that.
I, I spent about an hour with, with our IT folks last week, and we ordered the right kind of stuff so that we can, hopefully, if it works, integrate these microphones, those microphones, that microphone, um, all into the speaker and into the recording device so that everybody gets picked up. The only, the only part that was tricky was that these microphones, while they get a pretty clear signal into the recording device, once they were plugged into a soundboard, um, really, really didn't have enough signal to, to be in there, so we had to get a pre-amp. So, the pre-amp is on its way, everything was, was purchased, it's on its way, and it'll be here hopefully and everything possibly today. And we'll, we'll keep after it till it, till it works.
Well, uh, my request has been in there for years, you have a simple system before when you were over at the old annex. You need something simple because the more technical you get, the worse it is. You don't have people that are qualified, at the last Star PC meeting, it was not hooked up, you couldn't hear.
Well, we're in the, we're in the county commission meeting, excuse me, in the library, and you asked us to address it, we are addressing the sound system. We're, we're moving forward, as Mr. Bulas has just told you, I'm sorry, George, a lot of these questions aren't what you want.
You cannot use microphones, they're geared for a recording system, for a PA system.
That's not what the ADA requires, it's for reasonable accommodation, that's the standard. And we're trying to make a reasonable accommodation pending the permanent system, once we find out when we can permanently occupy this building again with the full county, county president or public president. So, this is adequate for the ADA, it may not be acceptable, I certainly don't like it, I told you that, but it's what we have right now and it's reasonable, so we're in compliance with the law, we can move on.
Okay, anybody else got any questions on the sound system? Mr. Bybee, Mr. Uh, Chatchis, I've tried to answer each and every one of your questions, I know they're not what you wanted to hear, but you asked for it. So we are not going to allow repetition on these items that we've just addressed today. We've settled it once and for all, you asked our answers, we gave you the answers, maybe you don't like them, maybe you do, but that's the answers, the DA has told you about the, uh, the trespass and bringing them back up over and over again. George, bring your comments that you have, if they're city involved, take them to the city council. We welcome your opinions and we look forward to them actually, all the time when you bring up new and items that are very important to the county, this is a county commission, you have to remember that, it's not the Tour Rec, it's not the city council. So, we, we've listened to this, I put this on there today to answer your questions, I know you don't like most of the answers, but that's what they are. I've addressed them, this kid, this commission has addressed them, we're not gonna hear them anymore. So when you bring new items to us, you're more than welcome in public comment, but do not bring back repetition, 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 we're not gonna take it if you do. I'm just gonna gather and that's gonna be it, we're not going to go back. Other new stuff, George, is fine, so with that being said, we've answered your questions and that's the end of this.
If the issue is not addressed, I will be back.
Oh, no repetition, George.
If it's not.
There, uh, this is the, George, this is how this is gonna work, you will always be entitled to your three minutes. You're more than welcome to bring any item of attention to the county commission that we need to properly agenda for discussion like today. Uh, if you bring up some of these items that we've already addressed within our control, they will be inflammatory and irrational because we can't control some of these things. There's a political process for removal of me, the sheriff, and any of these commissioners if you're not satisfied with the job that we're doing. Other than that, it's a waste of everyone's time and we're not, we're not, we don't allow it. We do encourage your other comments though, on other items that you might have.
All I'm asking is comply, that's all.
We hear that.
Okay, if you hear it, let's see some action, that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in addressing these items, uh, I think we've created, uh, one issue, there is fairly clear laws on elections uh, that allows all candidates equal opportunity to be heard, whether it's, uh, through television, radio, in a newspaper, or in, I believe in this forum. Uh, with that, I'm gonna be reaching out to the other challenging candidates and, and, and I will be doing up to eight items for each of them on the agenda, to, so that we can have their issues taken care of in front of the board as well, and, and discuss those issues.
That's okay, as long as our agenda is, we do, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
So that way we're, we just keep it equal for all, all of the challenging candidates.
And I think bringing these to, in a public meeting to my, try and answer the questions was a good thing, and I think that's good too as well. Uh, we're over there at nine thirty, so let's go to the nine thirty, uh, item on page three. It's, uh, natural resources, item one is discussion for possible action, approval regarding to work, to work order amendments for the project coordination meetings, minor work requests and project management, and for the development of a comment letter to the BLM, opinion Juniper categorical exclusion, Jeremy Drew, Jeremy, you on there?
I am, is everyone here, are you okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone, for the record, Jeremy Drew, project manager with Resource Concepts. Uh, thanks again for hosting me remotely today via Zoom, uh, thanks to Ms. Baldwin and Ms. Weevil for assisting me with, uh, the agenda items today. I just wanted to point out that also on Zoom from RCI is Captain Uheart, Captain, maybe you can give a quick wave. Um, but Captain will be assisting me with, um, issues related to your project in White Pine County, especially over the next, uh, month, month and a half. Uh, my wife and I are expecting, uh, a new arrival in the family in mid-May, uh, so there may be a block of time here, we're unavailable in the next couple. But we're gonna have you covered and just to let everyone know, uh, RCI is still in business, uh, while we're close to the public to, to meet the state mandates. Uh, we're all working from home and getting much better at doing remote meetings than we, we were a month ago. So, um, again, today I've got, uh, four items to cover, I know you've got a full agenda, um, so I will provide kind of an overview. Uh, Chairman, if that meets your approval, I'll let you introduce the agenda items, give a quick overview and then ask, um, for any questions.
We just did the first item, I'll do them as you discuss each one, so we just opened the first one, I just read it into the minutes, uh, the approval regarding the work order. Is that, do you have anything else to add on that particular item?
Sound check, just quickly, um, at our, at your March meeting, you approved our overall contract, um, as I mentioned then, we would come to you with one-page, uh, task order amendments. Um, to basically laid out what we're gonna do under each phase work, kind of our budget and deliverables. Uh, phase one is really just our coordination, communications, and minor work requests, um, so nothing, uh, I don't think anything extraordinary here that we didn't discuss back in March. Um, and then the second one was a little bit bigger items, so we made a separate task order and that was specific to, um, addressing the, the comments for the opinion Juniper categorical exclusion. Um, I put Mrs. Carson on there, she was designated our point of contact, I'm happy to have, uh, additional folks from the commission or the DA's office if appropriate. Uh, but these are the first two work items for us to, to get started, they're backdated to April first, to match the approval of our contract.
Any questions by anyone in the commission? Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Shane, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous, item two, Jeremy, is discussion, this is discussion update only regarding a data call for raven information by the US Fish and Wildlife Service. Attached information was submitted on March fourth thirty-first, two thousand twenty, to meet the request deadline, Jeremy?
Yeah, and this is, um, a little bit of a, a free beer bonus for you guys, uh, the deadline was March thirty-first, which is before our contract, uh, started, so you won't see any work on our first employees, um, for this, but we wanted to make sure the county had something plugged into the process. Uh, this was a little bit unique in that US Fish and Wildlife Service had kind of an open data call for information specific to ravens. Um, I talked with Commissioner Carson about this, we thought it was important to get, um, at least some general information in, and so what you see is, is what I submitted through their uh, comment website and it basically just directs them to entities that would have a little bit more specific information, uh, about raven numbers and raven control efforts. Whether that be Endow or Wildlife Services, uh, or some of your, um, direct constituents who might have more information, whether that be uh, through the import program board or some of the other, uh, local entities out there. And so again, it, it was not a formal scoping period, that's why you don't see a, a formal comment letter. Um, but we will keep an eye on this because they know it's something that the county wants to track going forward as, uh, Fish and Wildlife Service gets into a little more formal process.
Thank you, any commissioners got any comments or questions of Jeremy on the raven?
Uh, Richard, I just wanted to comment that, um, Jeremy and myself also with a lot of these things have worked with, uh, NACO and also NACO's, um, Public Lands Committee, and also with the district attorney's office, just so that you know that I'm not the only one holding up the ball here, or handling the ball, that, uh, you know, it's, it's a collaborative effort to come up with these things too.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. That was a discussion update, if there's no further comments from the commission, we'll move on to the next item. Item three, on page three, is discussion for possible action to ratify prepared comments on the opinion Juniper categorical exclusion for the BLM, which comments were signed by Chairman Richard Howe and submitted Tuesday, April fourteenth, because of the pending deadline, Jeremy? I mean, this, this doesn't require that, it's just to ratify the comments that were put there, and we've already signed it and sent it off. So, I'm just asking the commission to approve that, the ratification, that, uh, signing.
Yeah, again, this was a, a quick turnaround, I think there was a thirty-day comment period here, um, obviously something that's important to the county, uh, and what you'll see on the first two pages of the letters, I really leaned on your approved, um, public land policy plan in terms of kind of emphasizing, uh, the county's position and reason for support on that. And then we provided some specific, um, clarifications and, uh, requests to kind of improve the categorical exclusion and some of the justification behind it. Um, and one of the things I'd like to do, and I know there's a couple folks on the phone who are part of this, but I'd just like to point out and really compliment, um, the local, uh, Ely BLM and Forest Service Office as well as the Conservation District, uh, and Department Wildlife, because quite frankly, you guys, uh, when you look at it statewide and probably even westward for that matter, um, have done a ton of really good, uh, work in terms of managing, you know, opinion Juniper woodlands and everything else. And so, um, while we did provide a comment and view this, uh, as a positive development with BLM, please don't pick it as, as them not having done a lot of good work already. So, um, again, unless there's any questions, uh, this was submitted, um, hard copy was sent, and then I also provided, uh, the draft letter via email and through the online, uh, comment forum. So, again, open to any questions.
Thank you, we have a motion by Ian to ratify.
Second.
Second by Travis, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous, last item, item four, is discussion for possible action to discuss a draft comments and approve submission and comments on the county letterhead on the Greater Sage Grouse issue for the BLM, Jeremy?
Yeah, again, this was a short turnaround, um, although the BLM did issue a thirty-day extension on the comment period. Uh, so I think the formal comment period now ends, uh, on May twelfth, um, we wanted to get this on the agenda while we could. Um, we, we completed this under work order number one, uh, it was, it was pretty easy to put together, uh, I've been working with Nevada. together. Uh, I've been working with Nevada Association of Counties now for about a year and a half on the two thousand nineteen update of the draft, uh, environment and tax statement. This supplement is really intended to address, uh, a lawsuit that was filed in Idaho, uh, that put a stay on the implementation of the two thousand nineteen plan. Uh, basically what we did here is we utilized the template, uh, that DECO had sent out, um, to all the counties and encouraged us to use. I, I really don't see any reason to spend additional time, um, developing our, our own letter, so I took the template, uh, and really quickly applied everything that we had to, um, White Pine County, uh, made sure it was consistent with what you all have done in the past in terms of, um, previous comment letters. And so that's, again, what you see before you. Unless there's questions, um, I, I wasn't planning to step through the, the letter specifically, but, um, I can certainly do so if, if there's any questions or desire to do that.
Are there any questions by anyone on the commission? For this discussion draft? Uh, I hear none and see none, so I'll ask for a motion to approve, I guess.
To approve was presented.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Maury. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you, Jeremy, for your, uh, waiting and your patience on the phone. And that being said, we're done with that, and we're gonna take a quick five-minute break. We'll come back to page three on the county commission issue.
Thank you, Jeremy, for keeping us on the straight and narrow.
Thanks.
Keep that. Thank you all. God willing, we'll see you before the end of, uh, the end of June anyway.
That'd be nice. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy.
We are going to go back into the commission meeting on page three, item two, under items for elected officials and department heads. Uh, item one is, uh, Travis Goldon, Vice Chairman, discussion for possible action to send a letter to the governor requesting that White Pine County be exempt from any further statewide orders regarding shutdowns, quarantines, et cetera, that relates to COVID nineteen after April thirtieth, two thousand twenty. White Pine County will continue to do what's best for the citizens in regards to COVID nineteen, but believes we can have a fully open economy, gaming, restaurants, bars, and all other currently closed businesses to be open backup, while encouraging businesses to maintain best practices to help mitigate the risk to the elderly and those with pre-existing conditions like so many are already doing. That being said, uh, Vice Chairman Goldon wrote a very nice letter. I'm gonna have him read into the, into the, uh, county managers who made it in this project so that we, uh, well, listen to, uh, the Vice Chairman, cause he did a really good job. I think he'll explain, uh, a little better.
I just wanna clarify, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This agenda item had to be requested before President Trump came out with his phase one. I did run it by the district attorney. Told him he could edit it however he saw fit. Mr. Chairman read it as well, so I did not act broke. I did not seek to drop the channels. But that being said, once President Trump came out with phase one, which I thought was a very prudent step, I changed my mind, if I'm allowed to do that, and wrote a very nice cordial letter to our governor, and I will read that into the record right now.
Okay. But before you take that, I just wanna ask the attorney, the way this is worded, uh, referring specifically to gaming restaurants and bars, of which I have all three, do I need to make a disclosure, or am I, do I need to abstain?
Uh, I think just disclosure this time. This is a letter asking the governor to open up, and you're elected by these people who also own gaming restaurants and bars. So, you're not, you're situated similarly to all the other business owners, and it's just a letter to the governor to consider reopening.
Okay, I just was curious. Were there mentions specifically what type of operation?
It was a letter to, it was a letter to ask him to open your establishment or your block.
It wouldn't affect my, me and your money than, than anyone else. So I will make a disclosure that I'm a principal in Ambi Bybee Company Incorporated, which operates a casino, restaurant, and bar.
All right. April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. Honorable Governors this life. The White Pine County Commission is ready to renew these times for the COVID nineteen crisis. We greatly appreciate the efforts you and your staff have gone to in ensuring all of us have the best chance of being healthy and safe during this pandemic. We know you take all these decisions very seriously and commend you for your leadership. We'd like to adjust that we feel would be the best approach towards opening the economy of White Pine County. Being our very limited number of COVID nineteen cases, three as of this ready, all in the family, household unit, we would like to be placed under, uh, we would like to be placed in phase one under the president's plan honorable for April thirtieth, twenty twenty. We will only continue to progress to the next phases when hurdles are met, which will be verified by our public health officer, Dr. Bean. If we start to experience an uptick in cases, we'll step back to previous protocols. Collectives aboard would feel that our little economies cannot sustain another thirty days of shutdown. It is getting hard by the day to see our small businesses suffer, and the many years of blood, sweat, and tears these owners have poured into their enterprises be watched away. We greatly appreciate your consideration and would be more than happy to do a special meeting with you and our public health officer via Zoom to come up with more detail plan if you feel is necessary. Thank you, Governors this life. Stay safe and healthy. And, uh, and, uh, the chairman, uh, Richard, he went and worked with Dr. Bean to develop a plan which is attached in the back as well. Uh, very, very soft, very, very reasonable. Um, endorsed by Dr. Bean. Uh, this is a very measured approach. Um, and then I handed out this that I put together this morning. It shows White Pine County is the seventeenth largest county by total area in the USA. And it, and just for the record, Knight County is ranked third largest in the country. Elko is ranked fourth. Lincoln is ranked seventh, and Humboldt is ranked thirteenth. So, put that in comparison, if White Pine County was a state, it would be larger by total area than New Jersey, Connecticut, Delaware, and Rhode Island. All these states have governors that can create their own, own plans and, and own mandates. And White Pine County, and if you take Ely to Las Vegas, being Ely's our population, so in the distance is two hundred forty miles. If you were to compare that to New York, if the New York had a growth of COVID nineteen policy decisions for a two hundred forty mile radius, then what's happening in New York would, as you can see on this handout, would affect Massachusetts, New Ham, New Hampshire, Vermont, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, Maryland, Jersey, Rhode Island, Delaware, and Washington DC metro. This isn't to take a shot at anyone. This is just saying that while there's so many different policies that are going to go on, continue to go on with these different states just merely by their jurisdiction or their, you know, there's however many governors and, and different, different plans that are gonna go on. So, I, I wanted to present this because, uh, I don't think the governor would be out of his bounds to look at this and say, well, with the situ, the geographic we situate, how White Pine County is situated, that, you know, maybe, maybe we, they should have a little bit of, of saving process just cause our size and, and how far we are away from the hotspot. Um, and have a, you know, someone from his board or something, uh, you know, meet with us or try to come up, try to come up with something. Uh, we have three cases, uh, they were all, the two came up about two weeks ago, but as Dr. Bean said, he assumed them positive, just didn't wanna put a test out on them. So, as we sit right now, at this moment, we even qualify for the phase one with fourteen days of, of decreasing cases, or no cases in our, in our case. So I think we just, we just need to ha, have a, have a conversation, a respectable conversation with the governor and, and ask if he just take, take a look at us. And, and I know he has tough decisions, and, and I can definitely see his point for Las Vegas, and, you know, uh, but that being said, our, our population could fit in one mega resort down there on the strip. So, I mean, I just, I just don't think a broad, a broad blanket serves us, serves us as well. And that, and this also goes the other way. If the state's opened up and then we do see a big tick up in cases, how's our authority gonna be at that point? Uh, I, I don't know the answer to those questions. I'm sure Mike's in, Phil's in there, but I just, you know, I just think we just would like to just, you know, have a conversation and, and see where, what we can do.
Ian?
Uh, the only thing I suppose I would, uh, maybe word a little differently, just so we don't, um, it's just, it's just a little, little sketchy, is if we experience an uptick in cases, because, um, I'm just gonna go ahead and admit mathematically, it's, it's pretty likely that we will experience an uptick in cases if we were to-